Welcome everybody. We're excited to see this group. It's so much fun to have parents and students with us tonight at the board meeting. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. And so if you'll all rise, I'll lead the group in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just want to thank everybody that helped us get to this point in the day. We have been on a site visit over at the new high school location. And so thank you for everyone that coordinated that. We also were in an executive session that we just came out of. And there were presenters that helped us walk through the different agenda items. So we appreciate all of the help. We are only as good as the individuals that provide the help and assistance to this board. So we just want to thank everyone that has put forth efforts today. We have some items of celebration. And I just want to let everybody know of the order so we can be prepared for the different events. We have, the first item will be something that I will present briefly. And then we'll turn the time over to Wasatch High School for a few recognition presentations. And then our final and most exciting presentation today of celebration will be done by the Peak parents and the individuals that are here to be a part of that. So I will start with one thing that has been very good for us over the last month. And I don't know if the individuals in this room have noticed, out in front of our schools and out in public locations, there have been signs, like campaign signs that you see that speak about our reading achievements. And there was a third-party assessment that was put out by a group of educators that ranks the different districts in the state of achievement. And this year, Wasatch High School was ranked number one in reading. And as the competition goes, we are the state champions of reading. And there's a lot of, um... School, a lot of, the higher district. The higher district is the state champion, right? What did I say?
You said high school.
High school. I apologize. We'll take it. And I, but when you look at the elementary, that's where it all starts. I think a couple of things that this district has done in the past five years that have led to that is we've put forth initiatives of all-day kindergarten. We've given opportunities for preschool advancement where students can come in and start learning it at the earliest stages. Another thing that we've worked on is bringing together our professional learning development groups or PLCs, committees at each school, at the elementary school, at the middle school, at the high school. And that wasn't the case. I think five, six-plus years ago, we were in, um... Paul would know, but I would say we were probably in the twenties. But this, Paul will give you all the details. But this is a recognition that we would like to give to the superintendent for his leadership and also for the different schools, especially the leaders and the teachers in those schools. And I'll turn the time over to board member Dickerson for the last part of this presentation.
This is for Superintendent Swett and for the rest of the district and everybody, everybody under the sun in the district for their accomplishment. And we are the, on behalf of the board, we want to recognize their hard-working efforts night and day for many, many years to reach this achievement. So we would like to present this to Paul.
Well, this is a big surprise for me. And this, this is really less about me than anyone else. It's more about our amazing teachers, our principals, and first and foremost, the awesome students that we have in Wasatch County School District. And we did get together about seven years ago. And we looked at our reading scores as they compared around the state. And of 41 districts, we were about middle of the pack. And we knew that we were better than that. And our principals on that day, that summer day, set some very lofty goals and said, "There's no reason why we shouldn't be leading the state in end-of-level reading scores." And they set some lofty goals, and they have worked tirelessly. And our teachers have been magnificent, coming early, staying late. The very targeted professional development that we've done to make sure that our teachers know what the science of reading is and how best to teach our kids how to read. And at this stage, after the data was scrubbed and it all came back, it takes some time. Last year's data, we didn't get the final word on it until about a month ago. And of the 41 districts, we came in number one. And that is such an achievement. There's other, two or three other districts that are always in that spot. And I think, I'm not sure we even really believed we could beat them back in the day when we set that goal. But we know it was a good goal to set and an aspiration to have. And because of the hard work of so many people and the great students that we have in this district, we're so proud to be first in the state this past year in our reading achievements. So thank you. I'm very humbled by this. And we celebrate state championships with trophies and recognitions. And I think it's so fitting that we're doing the same thing with our reading championship, that we're celebrating it in the same manner. And this'll have a special place. We'll let this travel around the district to each school and be on display. And thank you, everyone, for your very hard work. And I hope the parents and the students that are here tonight are proud to be a part of Wasatch County School District, the 2023 state champs in reading. And by the way, we were third in math and seventh in science. And we're only going in one direction, and that's up. So your home district is a very high-achieving district. And it's because of the leadership of this Board of Education and all of the hard work that's been done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll turn the time over to Principal Kelly and the Assistant Principal Jarvey. That's what I have on my list. If not, correct me, but it looks like you're both here.
Well, again, thank you guys for having us here. And congratulations to the school board and superintendent for allowing us to set goals and to see those goals achieved. Appreciate that. And we talk about leadership. We've had some things happen at the high school that we're working on. And we saw a need of helping parents and students understand maybe some of the dangers of drug use. And so a few weeks ago, Mrs. Jarvey put together an awesome committee, and we call it Wellness Night. And I'm going to have her talk about it. But if you want to talk about leadership, Mrs. Jarvey really put together this group. And we had a fantastic outing for our first awareness night, our wellness night. So Tara's going to speak to it. I just want to say thanks for allowing me to be the principal of the high school and having a great team that serves with me because we can't do this by ourselves. It takes a group, takes a herd of us, so thank you.
So one of the things that I appreciate the most about this district and the way that we run things here is it's okay to struggle. And so as the beginning of the school year kicked off for us at the high school, we started having a lot more suspensions related to drug use. And there was a moment where I suspended another kid another day in a row. And I called Eric Campbell and I said, "I need help because it's not getting better." And the other most beautiful thing about this district is I can find help here. And so I'm going to have my team join me because these are the people that have come together to help me with this. Mindy Matthews is our juvenile probation officer. Come on up here because you can ask them questions if you want to. These are some experts. Alicia Powers and Jenny Pinter are social workers at our school. Angelica Zelaya is our Latino family outreach person. And Jen Ross Kelly is one of our guidance counselors. And so this team and I got together and we said, and Aubrey. Aubrey, we cannot forget Aubrey because she is the brains of the operation on a lot of things. One of the things that we found as we were dealing with kids that were under the influence of drugs at school is that we were seeing medical effects that we've never seen before. We're seeing kids with increased heart rates that are dangerous. And we're seeing things that you wouldn't really affiliate with the drugs that we're finding kids with. So we pulled this team together and we said, "How are we going to start educating people and be more preventative and proactive?" And so together with their expertise, we pulled together as many families as we could. And we targeted kids that we thought would need the information as well as their parents. We had about 350 parents come to this awareness night and many, many follow up with questions. And we intend to do another one because what we're seeing at the high school is this is a community issue. We partnered with the health department. They also came in and helped us with this and are continuing to help us figure out how to problem solve because we're seeing some really good kids having access to things that aren't good for them in our community. And so to give them the information to know what they're doing and give the parents the information to know the signs if their student is struggling. And really, it's all about information. And the work that Aubrey's done to help us have even more information as far as having drug tests available for parents at our schools is incredible. And so we're in the thick of it. We don't have it figured out yet. But I want to thank these people publicly for sharing their knowledge and time and resources to help us figure it out. And thank you for providing us with the resources and environment to do the work that we are passionate about. And I'm going to open it up to them if they'd like to share anything. But I'm going to really encourage Aubrey, too. And the reason I say that is because she could probably give you some information about what's out there now. And just a quick little summary of what we're seeing, kids think that they're vaping marijuana these days, and that's just not the case. So if you could share just a little, sorry, I totally put you on the spot. I'll fill in. If you stop, I'll take over.
Okay, so I think one of the scariest trends that we see is the rise in fentanyl. And so fentanyl is 100 times more potent than morphine. It's 50 times more potent than heroin. And we're seeing that this is being put into everything. We're seeing counterfeit pills. Seven out of 10 pills on the street are counterfeit. They're being laced with, vapes are being laced with PCP and fentanyl now. Marijuana is never just bud anymore. It's the marijuana of the eighties and nineties and early 2000s is gone. And so our vape pens almost all have marijuana in them. And we are seeing every trace of bud has fentanyl in it as well. So fentanyl kills kids. There's not a, you don't get to learn how to use drugs. One time can kill. And the addiction crisis is real because it's so addictive and so strong, these kids get hooked right away. So it's really sad because we see addiction in such young bodies. And we see the really powerful effects of this drug use happen really quickly. So it's scary. It's scary for the kids. It's scary for parents. It's scary for administrators and teachers and all of us at schools. It's a situation that is new. It's a new experience, and we're doing a great job dealing with it. But it's going to take some time in education. Any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Just props to you. I showed up to the high school and she was sick. And I was like, "Is she allowed to not come to school?" She's amazing. The fairies are a huge asset to the high school, like Mr. Kelly said.
I have a quick comment. I, so you mentioned fentanyl. And I lived in Seattle a long time ago, and I, my heart is there. And I watched, my family and I went there a year ago. And I, you know, that's a place, a city that's been hit with fentanyl really bad. And I'm sorry, but not on our watch. We are not going to let that happen on our watch. So thank you for everything you're doing.
And we will have another Wellness Night at the high school for anyone in our community in January. We'll advertise that better so that we can get more people involved and get more information out there for parents.
I'm going to say one more thing. I don't want this to be like, oh, this is a downer situation because it's not. We're just trying to educate people to help them be better served. This is not like, oh, gloom and doom, the high school. No, we're doing lots of awesome things. But I wanted to recognize these guys for taking their own time. They didn't get paid extra that night. They did it because they love what they're doing and they want to help people. That's why I want, we wanted to recognize them, not because this is doom and gloom with the high school. There's a lot of cool things going on at the high school. We just have to educate some folks about it. So thank you, guys, for being here. You're the best, and thank you, guys.
All right. And without further ado, we'll have Claire Mayer, the esteemed director of education or special education, come up and present the the Peak donation.
My whole contribution is to turn the time over to Eliza Woodland, these wonderful Peak ladies. But now that I have the microphone, I'm going to take over for a minute. I just want to publicly say what an amazing group of parents and community members that this team is. They are powerhouses. If you want something done, you're looking at the people to do it. And I'm so appreciative of them. And we will turn the time over to Eliza Woodland.
Well, Mr. Kelly, I was going to start in that I'm really glad I'm here with some really good news. So, but I'm really grateful for our high school and the awesome people there, too. So first, I definitely need my ladies up here because this is a team effort. So if you can come up, if your kids are doing okay, you know, just come up. We need camaraderie here. And like Claire said, I've worked with a lot of groups in my life, and I use the word stalwart with these women. You want something done? We have a text strand that if you want to be bombarded, you get on that text strand because it's constantly going. But first of all, I want everybody to make sure they know who Wasatch Peak is. We are Parents Empowering Aabled Kids. And we all have students in the district who have special needs and enjoy the great opportunity and services that this district offers. Our mission is to provide educational, recreational, and employment opportunities for these students that they might not normally have. And you're going to see a video here coming up that will show some of the things that we do. One of our biggest focus each year is to make sure our teachers and paraprofessionals know how much we appreciate them. And we know their jobs are hard. We have had hard kids come through, and we, as parents, can't thank them enough. Another thing that we do that's really important to us is the recreation. And we have partnered with the National Ability Center for probably seven years now. And every year, we have at least 100 kids or more participating at the NAC doing adaptive rock wall climbing, archery, an obstacle course where they're up in the air in wheelchairs, I might add, as well, like 30 feet, doing zip lines, cycling, adaptive cycling. Some of our students learned how to ride a bike when their parents never thought that could happen. And lastly, skiing and snowboarding. We send kids every year. And at the cost of hardly anything, if nothing, for the parents and the teachers. So those are some of our big things. But tonight, the biggest celebration is something that we had a vision of years ago and didn't know if we could actually attain it. And we wanted to purchase an accessible van. And working with Adam, we had to modify to what our original vision was. And we're hoping to maybe have a fleet of vans so that the teachers can get our kids out in the community. That's really important to us as parents. Myself, we, my husband and I have seen a huge impact in Hallie's life since she started the Transition College, where they go out every single day in her van. And she has jobs and they exercise. And she is in the community. And people all over in St. George come up and say, "Oh, I know Hallie," you know? So it's really, really important for us to have our kids out in the community. So today is our celebration. The van is here, and we are donating that to the district tonight. And lastly, we can't leave tonight without thanking our sponsors. This community has the most amazing local businesses that sponsor us year after year. They monetary, they come to our 5K every year. But they have made this possible. And all of you, especially our teachers and the Wasatch High School, has given us a tremendous amount of support at our 5K. So we just want to thank everybody here and all of you for taking good care of our kids. We really appreciate it.
We're just going to watch a quick video for our sponsors, a thank you video. And then after that, we'll all adjourn to the, just the front of the building is our van. And we'll have some of our kids cut the ribbon and hand the keys off to the district. And then after that, we have some refreshments in classroom B, just that first classroom for those who are here for this specifically. I, sorry. We can save some treats for later if you want. So we'd love to visit with you if you're here for this. If we could just be sure and be in that classroom and keep the door closed because they have to keep the doors open to this meeting because it's an open-chamber meeting. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
That's fine. You have as much fun as possible. The louder, the better. We'll function just fine. Okay, roll it.
Hi, Peak! We just want to thank you so much for everything that you guys have done. Our kids have loved all the opportunities they've had to be able to go skiing and bike riding and such good skills that they wouldn't be able to do without your support.
Yeah, he's working.
Peak! We just want to thank you so much for everything that you guys have done. Our kids have loved all the opportunities they've had to be able to go skiing and bike riding and such good skills that they wouldn't be able to do without your support. So we love you.
We love you.
Look how strong you are.
Thank you, sponsors, for your support.
Thank you, sponsors. I love skiing.
Thank you for your donation.
Thank you for all the...
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me go to the National Ability Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Peak.
Okay, thank Peak 5K for helping me. I got to buy a computer with the computer waiting to go with the PUKA. I'm going to use it to do my today.
Thank you, sponsors.
Thank you, sponsors, and I'll see you skiing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ty, what was your favorite part? Milo loves the zip line. Hey, say hi. What was your favorite part?
Archery.
Archery.
And skiing.
And skiing. Thank you again.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you to our sponsors for supporting us and remembering all of us. You guys are amazing, and you always support the work we do with the kiddos, and we love you.
If we can just all go outside now, thanks.
If we can just all go outside now, thanks.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent items pass. All right, let's get into the action items. Looks like we're gonna invite Todd Johnson, the curriculum director, to come up to go through action item number one.
So this request has to do with licensing, and the request is to consider a number of teachers that are requesting LEA-specific endorsements. And so what that means is we have 48 teachers that we've contacted and are working with that have red flagged as unendorsed for the subject area that they're teaching. And so just to give you some examples of that, we have more than one early childhood teacher that is highly qualified for elementary school but does not have the early childhood endorsement. And we feel like they're highly qualified and doing very well with their assignment. And so that's one example of an LEA endorsement that we're requesting. Other examples include, we have a cheer coach and a basketball coach that is teaching one period of a cheer class, one period of a basketball class during the regular school day that the state is flagging as not highly qualified for having an endorsement to teach a PE course. We don't think that that's necessary, given their assignment. And so some of our teachers are working on their endorsements, but they would need an LEA-specific endorsement from the board this year in order to continue teaching in their assignment while they're pursuing that endorsement. And so that's my proposal to the board tonight, that we give those teachers that LEA-specific endorsements so that they can keep teaching in their assignment this year. So my proposal is requesting your approval for those endorsements.
So moved.
Any questions?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, action item number one passes. Thank you, Todd. All right, number two, oh my, school calendar. Say it ain't so. Kirsta, thank you for all-
This is the weight of the school calendar.
All the work. The comments just keep coming in.
Everything was so positive, and then-
I know, right? The calendar is positive.
Nobody wants you to do it!
Whole thing's falling apart. Never seen that in the universe, that's supposed to- Test, test. Dustin?
Well, I can't, I'm so short, I can't even-
Check.
Oh, that was a harbinger of things to come.
Okay, so where are we with the calendar?
On the October 24th meeting, we presented the iterations that we had, so in, sorry. In September, we originally presented two iterations. In October, we came back with the comments that were out from September to the October meeting, and we sent you back with the comments to consider for versions one and two. The difference being, in one, we start on Friday, the August 9th, and get out two days after Memorial Day. And in the draft number two, we start on Monday, the 19th of, is that the 19th? The 19th of August, and get out the Friday after Memorial Day. So it reflects a lot of comments we do receive on starting a little later in August, and also still gives a full week at Christmas for students. Staff do come back on Thursday in January, and they have the two PD days. And then we have PD days together, which is the preference of staff in both calendars. And it just comes down to which is the most, the calendar that makes the most sense academically for our students and staff. Do you have questions about it?
I guess my question is maybe some of the comments regarding the break in October. Like, how do we tie that in? Do we wanna do something different? Or is that where the district strongly feels we should stay? Because that's what's best for academics?
And it breaks so that we have the quarter starting after fall break. But we have the two PD days together, and actually Stephanie Dishar, our director of second, our of elementary ed, was going to- was going to speak if you could about why we keep those PD days adjacent to the break. And I think that were some of the comments. So maybe Stephanie can kind of- From being so recently in the school.
Yes, we were just, I was just the principal. Um, I think the, the biggest thing, two things with that is the teachers preferred having them together. That is all, that's their feedback. And the other thing is thinking about, um, our families. I know that there's comments with families and single families and, you know, would it be easier than to find some additional daycare for two days if the two days were together? I don't know, yes or no. It's a thought. We had it one way, the other way. Maybe trade, putting it this way. Academically, as far as a principal goes, this is just something the teachers have said. They'd much rather have it, um, you know, after the break. They're refreshed. Um, they can, you know, focus a lot better and they're able to take a look at the data and then spend another day doing the planning for the future term.
So I just had a question just cause a lot of the feedback was that fall break was too long. I read through all however hundred and whatever comments and that seemed to be a main theme. If we were to leave those PD days together, but put them back in, like if we look at draft two, just cause it's up on the screen. So if we move the PD days to like the seventeenth and eighteenth and just had that one week and then put the two days on wherever people were saying Christmas or elsewhere, would that still work? Cause then we're keeping our PD days together, but then it's not ten straight days? Just cause that was a lot of the feedback. I guess maybe a better way of saying it, do we want to do a revision considering the amount of feedback we got that had the same theme?
And so-
I would just keep in mind that, um, that being said, I, I, I think you would, I think you would get some pushback from the teacher. So everybody would have a week, except for the teachers, they would have three days.
Right.
I thi- I think that there would be some pushback from our teaching. We have about five hundred teachers in the district and and, uh, it would feel like the rest of the counties out on spring break and, and teachers are heading back to work on the Thursday. So a lot of the feedback and input that I'm getting from people is that they really like fall break. Um, we remember when we first went to a week-long spring break, it was, there was some consternation for a year or two and, and now if we, if we suggested anything less, um, you know, I think we'd have, we'd have a revolt on our hands. And I think fall break is going through some of the same things that spring break went through, but overall I, most of the, most of the feedback I get, and I think most of the staff would agree is, is very positive about the week, that's spring break. And we get it. We're trying to do our professional development. It makes it, it makes it extra long through a couple of weekends. We, we, we get it. Um, that professional development, I would just say is, is so important to our academic goals. And, uh, we started doing those two days together during COVID. Um, our, I think our results speak for themselves, um, during COVID and since COVID. And, uh, I, my recommendation is we, is we stick it out for another year or two and see how it goes.
And isn't that the reason why we've improved in reading?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is because of the PD days?
Yeah. To clarify, I'm not looking to do anything to PD days. I wanna keep those together. It's, if there's feedback goes that it was too long.
Stacy, can you push it up a little bit so I can see all of December on draft two? On draft two. There you go. Thanks. Okay. Well, the board has to make a decision. Are we gonna tear into this another month? Or are we gonna vote on draft two right now? I entertain a motion. We vote on draft two. Second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, draft two passes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I know that was a tough decision, but we'll live to find another calendar. Number three, Weston.
So we are building homes for the CTE class. That's a construction class. And as part of that home building process, we need to have lots, um, that we are going to be building those homes on. So the school district currently has finished one home, um, over in the Hamlet Home subdivision in Brookside and are currently under contract or under construction in a home in the Parkview Place subdivision, which is owned by Mountainland, um, community development. And so we own two lots there. We're planning on finishing this house this year and then next year building another house on the other lot that we own. But we would like to purchase two more lots adjacent to the two that we already have. Um, and the price is a hundred and fifty thousand per lot, which in this market is obviously the cheapest in the valley. But it, they are also deed restricted, which means that, um, if, if I, if, if we end up building this house for five hundred thousand, they re- we, we, we'll, we restrict it and, and all the other houses in the subdivision are restricted by a three percent increase per year. So you couldn't, if I, if, if, if we sold it to a teacher for the, what we were into it for five hundred thousand and two years later they sold it, they, they would max out at like five hundred and thirty thousand. Does that make sense? It, it, it increases three percent per year is the max that they can sell it. So it keeps affordability in, in a level. And so our proposal is to purchase two more lots and then see where we're at, at that point in the real estate world.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Weston?
I do have a question on the deed restrictions. So is it deed restricted to primary residents as well?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not like we can have any investors come in after five years or ten years and say, oh no. It's primary residents deed restricted to an increase of three percent a year.
And typically the way that it's worded and, and we include this in our, when, when they create this deed on it is we as a school district will retain our first right of refusal.
Cool.
And then Mountainlands Community Development also retains a right of refusal before it goes to the open market.
Good to know. Thanks.
And remind me the size of the lot again.
There, oh, Jason might know more than, it's like point one five, I think, of an acre.
Measure them in square feet instead of-
Even better. Yeah. Okay, that answers my question.
Yeah, they're small.
They're small. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Action item number three passes. Thank you. All right, for the board report, um, before we turn the time over to the superintendent for anything that he wants to discuss this upcoming board meeting, we'll invite, um, our spouses to have dinner after the board, uh, meeting. And so we'll do the same thing as we did last year. On the nineteenth, we'll try to have a streamlined board meeting. And then we'll invite, um, our spouses to come and we'll, we'll spend the evening eating dinner with them and celebrating the season. All right? Is, are you saying formal dress? Is that what you said?
No.
All right.
Kim wants to-
You want, you want?
I propose that we do ugly sweaters.
Ugly sweaters, okay. Ugly sweater board meeting, we can do that.
You can shoot me down.
I'll just, well, wear my normal clothing. I got a BYU sweater I can wear.
Okay, that's the only thing that I had from the board report. Um, we'll get into some other first of the year activities, um, around the school board national meeting and the state meeting, but we can do that next month. But put that on your calendars, the nineteenth, um, we'll have, uh, we'll try to be done about now, right? Seven thirty?
Right.
So you can have your, your spouses come around seven fifteen, seven thirty.
You don't wanna have Sarah see in action before that?
No, she doesn't. There's nothing to see here. All right. Superintendent.
Um, well, I just go back to our tour of the school. We're, we're really pleased with, with how that's moving along. We're fortunate to have, um, a bit of an open fall so far. And, uh, they're, uh, Westland Construction and, um, our, our block masons are making good time. I think we have over thirty block masons working out daily on, on site and it's good to see the progress moving along as, as well as it has. Um, the other thing I'd mention is I ha- I had an opportunity and I, I'm wondering, um, Stacy, if we could maybe try and have, uh, Principal Katie Cummings, uh, come to our next board meeting with, or maybe January would be better. If they came in January and, and brought her Latinos in Action group with her, maybe the same group that, that I have the privilege of attending the annual Latinos, uh, in Latinos in Action banquet. It's a, it's a gala that they, um, that they put on down at Thanksgiving Point. Um, we, you know, Wasatch High was involved in some of the early days of, of Latinos in Action here in the state. There was a gentleman that worked at Provo High at the time that's, that's headed that up. Um, and as it's, it's spread across the, the nation, um, we do have another first in our district and that is Heber Valley Elementary is the first elementary chapter of Latinos in Action. And so they were being recognized at this, at this evening, um, celebration. Uh, it was a lot of fun. They, they invited my wife and I to come along and we, we spent the evening with, with Principal Cummings and, and, uh, three students and, and three of the folks that, that worked closely with, with those students in that, that club over at Heber Valley Elementary. And it was, it was a wonderful evening and, um, in a very crowded room of, of probably over a thousand people, they, they recognized our table and had us stand up and, and it was a, it was a lot of fun. And, you know, I think our district leads out on a lot of things and this is, this is just one more thing that, uh, that we have the first, uh, elementary chapter of Latinos in Action, um, here in Wasatch. So very, very fun. And, and when they come, I've got a bunch of pictures that we can show on, on that evening and, um, nice, and a nice, uh, nice recognition, um, for Heber Valley Elementary. They're, they're doing great things over there. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Just master board certification. If you guys can get it done, you get entered into a drawing for a fifty dollar gift card by December first. So look for an email from me with your, uh, stuff.
Okay.
Should've already gotten one too, but I'll send another one.
Perfect. If there aren't any other comments, I'll, I move that we adjourn. Say again. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.